Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Glenorkie City Council on Monday, the twenty sixth of August two thousand and twenty four. I'm Sue Hickey, I'm Mayor of Glenorkie City Council and Chairperson for this afternoon's meeting. Glenorkie City Council acknowledges the Moanena people as the traditional owners of this land. While sadly the Moanena people did not survive colonisation, we recognise all Tasmanian Aboriginal people as the original owners and continuing custodians of the land and water for this island of Torrida. We pay our respect to elders past and present. We commit to working for a city that welcomes and respects all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Island people. Joining me in council today is Alderman Justin Stringer, Councillor Molly Kendall, Councillor Harry Quick, Alderman Jen Dunsby, Deputy Mayor Russell Yaxley, the General Manager Tony McMillan. We have Alderman Stephen King, we have Alderman Stuart Slave, we have Alderman Josh Cocksher, and we have Alderman Shane Alderton. Before we open our agenda, I take this opportunity to make a statement about workplace health and safety. The Glenorkie City Council takes its workplace health and safety very seriously, and this includes physical and psychological safety. We have a job to ensure a safe workplace is provided for employees, elected members, contractors, volunteers, and members of the public who may be present at council meetings and workplaces. Council meetings form part of the council's workplace, and it is expected that everyone who attends council meetings will behave in a polite and respectful manner. Council has endorsed a statement of intent giving out how we as elected members have agreed to conduct ourselves in representing the people of Glenorkie. In accordance with this, any disagreement should be expressed respectfully, remembering both during debate and decision-making, that we are elected to represent and serve the people of Glenorkie and to make our city the best it can be. Finally, I note that the open section of this meeting is being livestreamed, and an audiovisual recording of the meeting will occur in accordance with the council's audiovisual policy, Recording of Council Meetings. Members of the public are not permitted to make audiovisual recordings of council meetings. We have twenty-four items on our agenda today, and Agenda Item One is apologies, I note we have none. Second item is confirmation of the minutes. Do I have someone to move the minutes of the council meeting twenty-ninth of July two thousand and twenty-four? Thank you, Alderman Alderton. Someone to second the motion? Thank you, Councillor Kendall. Any discussion?
Just the minutes are true and correct, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour, raise your hand. That's unanimous, carried. And then Item Three is announcements by the Chair. So first of all, I'm going to give a pool update. This is about the repair and reopening of the existing pool. Council continues to work with a range of professionals, including engineers, architects, building surveyors, and quantity surveyors, to plan and design the required upgrades within the allocated budget of five million dollars. Following the engineering assessment of the required pool and plant works, the teams have now undertaken an assessment of the administration area, change room and toilet facilities, and developed cost estimates for both the required and recommended works. These works are now being refined into detailed designs for approval, and then they will form the contract documentation for tendering once we have received the five million dollars from the state government. Let me be clear, council is not prepared to spend rate payer's money on the repair and reopening of the pool in massive amount. We're waiting for the firm confirmation of the five million dollars promised by the state government once their budget is handed down on the twelfth of September. We have actually received two letters committing to this, but we haven't received the deed of funding to actually say the money is in your account. So that's not too far away, but we haven't stopped our internal works. So that's not going to really be a holdup. Now, the future of the new pool. Tonight, we will decide on what a future Glenorkie pool will look like. Elected members have been thoroughly briefed by MI Global and council offices on the best option for a redeveloped pool, taking into consideration the community's wishes, the return on investment, and the all-important social health and community benefits. During MI Global's first round of consultation, we heard very loud and clear that the community wanted to retain a contemporary swimming pool facility in Glenorkie. Then the elector poll, which received more than twenty-two thousand votes, found that ninety-three percent of people in Glenorkie want a council to apply for funding to redevelop the pool into a modern facility that will serve the community for the longer term. Council took this vote as a powerful signal of what the community wants. Therefore, the option that we settle on tonight will be one that will serve not just Glenorkie, but the broader region for many years to come. Yes, a redeveloped pool, a facility which will meet all contemporary standards and cater for growing communities' needs for at least the next fifty years, will be expensive. Yes, there are less expensive options, but the benefits are significantly less and do not deliver what the community have asked for. They're also very difficult to justify for funding. It is our job as elected members to ensure that the option we choose represents the best value for money for the residents of the future. Tonight, we will also discuss federal government funding opportunities for the pool, namely the recently released Urban Precincts Partnership Programme. I look forward to the discussion about the pool and potential funding opportunities tonight, but want to assure people that our immediate priority is to repair the existing pool and have it reopened as soon as possible. Now, I'm going to talk about city safety. Council is continuing to focus on and advocate for a safer city, given the recent spate of criminal activity in the business areas in particular, just recently. Earlier this month, in partnership with TAS Police, we were very glad to see that we had Operation Saturate, which had a huge presence of policemen in the city all round, going from Claremont through to Munna. And this resulted in four people being arrested, two people issued summonses, one infringement notice issued, two youth diversions issued, seven people issued a formal direction to leave the area, twelve drug detections made, and three cautions issued for alcohol offences. Inspector Clue, who is our new Inspector of Police, just there with me in the middle, has informed me that it will happen again at random intervals. We want to make it quite clear to people that we do not want crime in the city. On Wednesday this week, we will host a Business Safety Breakfast to brief business owners on their legal rights and how to keep themselves and their staff and their business safe from antisocial behaviour. If you own a business in Glenorkie and haven't already done so, I encourage you to register for this Business Breakfast. On the eleventh of September, we will host a community yarn with a focus on saving. Dr Zalinda Sherlock will provide advice on how to be a safe bystander when confronted by antisocial behaviour. Details about this session will be available on our Facebook page and website in the coming day. Aside from the continuing work with police in a collaborative and coordinated way, and our communities' team works tirelessly every day on council lawns, engaging with young people and connecting them to the services they need, such as homelessness, drugs, alcohol, and mental health. We run a raft of activities, including after-school basketball, monthly barbecues, first tea, which is golf programme in schools, back-to-school breakfasts, the Happy Mentor Programme, and Youth Connector Programme at the Jobs Hub. Council has committed significant resources to this youth engagement work, but we are restricted by the lack of safe space to provide the care and attention many of these young people need. Therefore, we are lobbying government for a dedicated space as a youth hub. A youth hub was one of the issues I talked to the Premier, Jeremy Rockcliffe, about on Friday, Friday just gone. At this meeting, I asked the Premier for an increase in police numbers for Glenorkie for support to establish a dedicated youth hub and his and his parliamentary colleagues' involvement in the council's city safety strategy. Premier Rockcliffe assured me that aside from the seventy-nine officers currently stationed in Glenorkie, the Glenorkie Police Station is one of seven around the state to be receiving new officers from the next graduating class in October. He and Minister Jensch also committed to include Glenorkie as a place-based youth offender trial area that will be rolled out across three to four locations across the state. The Premier also agreed to work with council to scope out the establishment of a much-needed youth hub. Now, whilst there's been a heavy focus on some of the disengaged youth and their criminal activity, and how sad and heavy that is to wear, I do have some really great news. And this is a happy story. This afternoon, I was able to attend Rosetta Primary, and such a beautiful school. The lucky children who go there taught respect, all sorts of kindness values. It really lifted my heart to see such happy, well-mannered, and respectful kids. And they were getting lots of rewards and recognition for the good work they've done. But one of the best projects they did was they saw a need in that tiny school for a defibrillator, because a lot of grandparents go, and some of the teachers are a bit older than the students, and sometimes they have guests that are even older. And so they wanted a defibrillator, and it was three thousand dollars. There's no longer state grants for those. So they decided to get about fundraising. Glenorkie City Council donated some funds, which really helped. And the children made little tiny hearts with Mrs Steen and Bergen teaching them blanket stitch. And they were little tiny hearts, and they managed to raise the money with the help of Roadtree, City of Glenorkie ourselves, and a couple of other businesses. And then today, in recognition of our support, they gave us this beautiful heart. So it's nice to see that there are some wonderful stories in the city. And I've got some other good news. Last Thursday, our Jobs Hub was visited by Minister for Skills and Training Felix Ellis as recognition of the wonderful job that our Jobs Hub is doing to support young Tasmanians aged fifteen to twenty-five to find a job to participate in training or further education. The Glenorkie Jobs Hub has engaged with more than six hundred local businesses and supported thirteen hundred community members into jobs since it opened three years ago. Over the next three months, we will be officially opening the playgrounds that have been funded through a federal government grant, and they are spectacular. There are now nine of these local playgrounds open, with the last at Rhodes Needs Reserve due to be completed in mid-November. Council has been shortlisted as an employer of choice. To get to this stage is a great honour, and it's a recognition of our commitment to investing in staff wellbeing, our inclusive practices, positive work-life balance, and best practice workplace policies and procedures. And a big congratulation to you, Tony, and your executive team. We will know in November whether or not we've been recognised as an employer of choice. And finally, please don't forget our next open workshop. We love to see the community participate in these. This workshop will focus on council's child and youth safety framework, what it is and what it means for our community, and how our council is responding. Do we have any pecuniary interest notifications? No? No. So now we're moving on to response to previous public questions taken on notice. And I think they're all on the agenda. And now we're going to move on to public question time. And goodness, I have to read this out, too. The council meeting is a formal meeting of elected members elected by the Glenorkie community, elected by the mayor. Public question time is an opportunity in the formal meeting for the public to ask questions on their elected council representatives about matters that affect ratepayers and citizens. In accordance with Regulation thirty-one, two, and three, Public Question Time, Local Government Meeting Procedures, Regulation two thousand and fifteen, Regulations, council will allocate fifteen minutes during each council meeting to invite members of the public to ask questions relating to the activities of council, which is known as public question time. The following rules and procedures apply to public question time. One, questions must relate to the activities of council. Two, members of the public are to announce their name and residential address before asking a question which will be recorded in the minutes. Three, questions are to be put succinctly and in the form of a question, not a comment, and no preamble, please. Four, questions must not be inflammatory, abusive, defamatory, contain a personal attack, or otherwise breach any rules of the meeting which have been explained by the chairperson. The chairperson may limit the number of questions asked by each member of the public in order to ensure that all members of the public wishing to ask a question are given the opportunity within the allocated time. The chairperson will decide the order of the questions to be asked and may rotate the order between different members of the public if individuals have more than one question to ask. The chairperson may, in their absolute discretion, refuse to answer a question if the chairperson deems it inappropriate or does not comply with these rules or the rules of the council meeting. Or they take a question on notice, in which case the answer will be provided in writing prior to the next council meeting and included on the agenda for the next council meeting. And eight, if a question is taken on notice, the chairperson may request that the members of the public submit their question in writing and may refuse to provide a response if the question is not provided as requested. And nine, fifteen minutes allocated question time may be extended at the discretion of the chairperson at the conclusion of that time period. Council is to publish information relating to question time, including any additional rules and procedures on its website. Right, so we've got through all of that. Do we have anyone who would like to ask a question today? Great, who wants to go first? Miss Brian?
I'd like to thank myself very much for looking at establishing a youth hub. Thank you so much. Devonport Pool has helped our population by twenty-six thousand. The world-class Devonport Pool reopened after rebuilding and other redevelopment in twenty fourteen. It includes the original, that four feet meter heated pool, I'll go quickly with this, the original water slide complemented with a twenty-five metre, eight-lane indoor pool heated to twenty-eight point five degrees, water therapy pool heated to thirty-four degrees, a learn-to-swim pool heated to thirty-two degrees. A shallow splash deck with water features, disabled changing facilities, and ramp access to all areas, as well as gym, group fitness studios, cafe and shop. The facility is managed by Belgravia. The yearly income from the pool through June two thousand and twenty-four was two hundred and five thousand dollars. The annual expense for the whole complex was one point six million, leaving a shortfall of one point four million per year. This is coming from the Devonport's latest annual plan. Therefore, why does the MI Global report state three point five million yearly running costs for Option Four, when Devonport's similar facility, managed by Belgravia, with less than half the anticipated patronage, currently costs ratepayers one point four million per year? Belgravia's last contract to run the Glenorkie Pool was four hundred thousand dollars for six months of the year. Why are council's media statements saying there will be a need for a nine percent rate increase of four million dollars to cover running costs of eight hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, when there is an estimated profit of two point seven million in the report? It appears there should be a very small rate increase of one point eight six percent, with being only seventy-four cents per week for ratepayers. So that's basically just analysing what's been put out.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to make a couple of quick comments. The Devonport Pool was redeveloped in two thousand and fourteen, that's over a decade ago. It is before the pre-COVID cost escalations, which I think you'd agree have exploded. We are not a marginal seed, that's another issue. But I am not the expert as you'd appreciate. So could I call on, through the General Manager, our expert Luke?
I'm not that expert, but...
We're very happy to answer the question.
Thank you. Thanks, Jen. Some of the figures that you've quoted, you'd probably be best to have a look at the finance section in the council report. The eight hundred thousand dollar operational loss figure that you're quoting, sounds like that's less than the operational loss of the Devonport Pool, which is probably right. Devonport Pool has lower expenses projections, but also lower revenue projections because of the higher usage. The nine percent figure isn't actually made up of the operational loss. If you read that finance section of the report, it talks about two things. One is the depreciation of a facility at that cost. That takes up about half of that figure. And the other half of the figure is assuming that council has to fund about a third of the pool. And there's some calculations in there around loaning that amount of money and how much those repayments would equate to, is another approximate four percent. If it was all covered by a rate increase, that is. So all that's really pointing to is that if all of the costs were covered purely by a rate increase, and that's not necessarily the only way to cover the cost, but if they were, it would equate to a figure of around nine percent. Now, we may get a hundred percent funding for the pool. If we're able to skew a hundred percent external funding for the pool, then that's four percent less than would be needed. The depreciation figure of a facility at that expense is always going to stay high. As the report points out, the inclusion of the health club and gym facilities could significantly improve the operational losses. The one that had the gym only had an operational loss of about two hundred and fifty thousand per year. So theoretically, it could come right back to that. So the operational loss may not be huge. But yeah, the ability to fund the pool's development, if council has to contribute, as well as depreciation of that asset, would come at a significant cost. It doesn't mean we shouldn't do it, we just have to be eyes open as to, I guess, the impacts of those. But certainly the consultants liaised quite strongly with both Devonport and Belgravia in the production of their report. The facility that's proposed is actually quite similar to the facility at Devonport. It is, yeah. We unfortunately didn't have the opportunity to retain our outdoor pool. Obviously, being sixty years old is part of the problem, in the sense that to build around that would create a difficulty with having that facility have to be pulled out and replaced within five or ten years, whilst everything's new around it. But we also don't have the space. So our site is a lot more constrained than the Devonport site in terms of spreading out around the existing facility. But it was definitely one of the models that was, probably the most strong of any other facility in terms of mirroring quite a lot of what our community was saying that they wanted, a mixture of indoor and outdoor facilities.
Yeah, it's just a bit, three point five million quoted in the MI Global compared to one point six million for Devonport.
Yeah, but they also suggest there's be a two point seven million revenue, which is significantly higher, almost double what the Devonport revenue was. So it's because the Devonport has a much smaller catchment, but they haven't increased it by the amount of our catchment, because they do acknowledge we've got a bit more competition with Clarence and Hover. Devonport's competition in terms of the facility is probably Longseton, which is a bigger separation. But having said that, Glenorkie has a much bigger catchment than Devonport, so...
And regional protection.
Yeah, that's right. So yes, the operating expenses are more, but the revenue is even more again. So the operating loss projection is actually less than Devonport's.
So, Miss Brian, if you ever need any assistance with that financial knowledge, you can come through and see me.
Okay.
That's all right.
Do you have a second question?
The other question was, how did council estimate the five million upgrade would only last five to seven years? A report on the lifetime of full states, a well-constructed in-ground concrete swimming pool, would last a lifetime. However, a pool's liner or finish needs to be resurfaced every ten to fifteen years. The pool itself was confirmed by Lakers to be well-maintained and have no major cracks. As the pool is being resurfaced with this upgrade, why wouldn't it last up to the fifteen years before needing to be resurfaced? Might be another one for you, Luke?
Yeah, okay. The five to ten year figure came from the original audit inspection when the pool was closed down. It is because it is sixty years old, so you're right, the lining, painting, and the coating has been done throughout its lifetime, and the joints, and that will be done again as part of the refurbishment. But yes, as you said, it can last a lifetime, sixty years is a lifetime. A commercial swimming pool usually has a projection of at least forty years. We have gotten it to sixty years. There are examples of certain pools that have lived a little bit longer than that, but not many that go far beyond it. If we aren't successful in receiving funding for a whiz-bang grand new pool, we will obviously try to maintain this asset for as long as we can. Again, we just want to be transparent that, which is part of council's decision as to whether to invest in the repair, that when you have a sixty-year-old facility at the end of its life, you can do repair work and you can keep it alive a bit longer. But we don't want to make promises that that will be twenty-plus years, because the expert advice we've had is five to ten years is probably what your expectation should be. If we don't get funding, maybe we can keep it for ten-plus years. We'll certainly be doing everything in our power to make it and keep it open for as long as we possibly can.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I'd just like to add, stating with what you've told me, stating that the nine percent rate increase has frightened people in Glenorkie and caused reputational damage. I'm a little bit concerned because there is background reasons for that, but it's not evident, and I think it's frightening the community that's on it.
Thank you. As you know, we're trying to keep everything as up to date and open on our website as we possibly can, so we'll put some words up around that.
If you could, it would be good, because it's just a bit misleading in the context of that.
Right.
Because it may not occur, you know, it's upsetting the community who are very nervous about rate increases.
Yes, we understand that, we've just been through the rates. So thank you very much, we'll do that. But we have to also have the worst-case scenario, thank you.
Yeah, it wasn't quite explained as the worst-case scenario, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Taken as one notice, thank you. And who was next? Coming up? Thank you.
Hello, Tia Ngili, Wildlife Court, Granton. Good afternoon. Luke's actually probably answered a lot of the questions already that I was sort of bringing up. Now, the elector poll question stated that the pool remain a public facility and remain where it is to be affordable for our community. It was currently running at a loss of around four hundred thousand dollars a year when it was last leased to Belgravia. My first question is that why are we not doing what the community wants by retaining the pool long-term with a far less extravagant upgrade and perhaps even keeping the water slide? This could be an excellent tourism tool if it had have been marketed correctly. Instead of looking to redevelop with all the extra amenities that will see us running into far bigger costs, why can't we just have the option to retain this facility for long-term?
Thank you. Can I just ask you... Can I just ask, did you participate in the consultation process? You did. Right. Okay, well, there were two questions put out on the elector poll, and the first one was, do you support the council with committed government funding urgently repairing and reopening the Glenorki Wall Memorial Pool? So that's what we're doing, we're getting on with that. 89.2% of 19,637 people voted yes. Second question was, should the council apply for future government funding to retain the pool and redevelop it into a modern public pool facility that will serve the Glenorki area for the longer term? Our understanding is we can only do that if we replace that 50-metre pool because it's not going to last another 50 years. So that's part of what came out of the consultation process as well. Like, there were nine options given to the public. Public had lots of opportunity to participate in the consultancy and tell us what they wanted from us and what sort of pool they were looking for in the future. And the main thing was a 50-metre outdoor swimming pool, which of course limits the time it could be used. Now, the other question you said, I've just lost the pot there, but I'm happy to ask Luke to come and answer your question as well. So the thing is, part of having the bells and whistles with what came out of the consultation and also the way that we get funding, it has to meet all sorts of criteria. So the MI Global is funded by $200,000 consultancy fee granted to us by the state government. They are experts in this field, we're not. And they went out to public consultation, as you know, widely consulted with the public, and they've delivered the options back for us to debate tonight. But I don't think I can substantiate that criticism because as far as we're concerned, we are honouring what we were asked to do, and we can't retain the existing pool as it is forever. Luke, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I could probably add a little bit. Just if I understand you correctly, Diane, are you suggesting maybe with a doormen development that's basically replace the facility as it is?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that would obviously come at a significantly less capital cost, and that's definitely true. I think the mayor's pointed to, I think, the reasons why, because the consultants did look at that. So whilst the initial upfront cost of doing it would be less, it struggled on a number of metrics, one of them being it would be only open six months a year or perhaps eight months a year with a better heating system on the shoulder months, but also the community benefits. So in order to get grant funding for the pool, key metrics that the government looks at is what's called a BCR, a benefit cost ratio, and the net benefits. And the net benefits aren't around how much money it's going to make, they're around things like how it improves the livability of the community, how it improves health outcomes, how it improves people's productivity, and all those sorts of things. When the consultants ran the figures on it, simply replacing it like-for-like came up with a negative BCR and a negative net benefits. The option four that they're suggesting comes with a positive BCR, I think it was 1.2 from memory, or something very close to that, and it was around 17 million in, sorry, make sure I quote that correctly, and 18.5 million in net benefits. So they're really important figures that if we're going to ask the state or the federal government for funding, if we go back and say it's a negative benefit cost ratio, it not only doesn't generate 18.5 million in health and social benefit, it actually comes back negative, then the chance of getting investment in that is obviously greatly diminished. So sometimes spending more to do a better product makes more sense socially and health-wise and economically. So even though it's a little bit harder to get it done upfront, you end up with a better product that stacks up better. So that's really the reason why they've pushed that line to have a more holistic facility.
Thank you, Luke. If I can just add that that particular model of slide, one of the things that when our pool was closed after the inspection was how particularly dangerous that slide was because it wobbles, it didn't have sides panels on it, it's not enclosed, and two people, a father and son, had died using it, I think in Queensland. So it should be condemned anyway. With the limited $5 million, we don't think we can stretch to a pool. We are looking, we are looking at every way possible to make sure there's children's activities or benefits there, but that slide cannot be retained, so we need to make that loud and clear, it's a death trap. And that's, a lot of the facilities that pool were considerably dangerous, so that's why it was closed. So we cannot continue to breathe air into it other than to revamp it according to legal lotion. So do you have another question? I do. So on today's agenda, page 41. I'm just going to ask the Alderman to consider very carefully on endorsing the matters if it means that leases can be in future leased on the way that Revive was dealt with, because will the KG5 tenants or pool advocate groups be involved with partnerships to be able to make profits like Revive? So my second question on that line is, do rate payers pay to maintain the lease at the hydrate therapy pool and pay the depreciation costs on this asset when the lease is only $10,000 a year? So that's a totally different question. I mean, it's not on this pool. That's my second question. Okay, so let's just deal with that. General Manager, do you want to answer that? Do rate payers pay to maintain the leased hydrate therapy pool and pay the depreciation costs on this asset when it's only $10,000? I don't want to see another repeat of a lease that Revive bought where they can just... You know, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding around that, and who wants to answer the question? Amelia or Luke?
We've probably both answered a bit. Look, I don't think the figure's quite accurate to start with because there's a whole lot of other payments that have come into it, but the maintenance is covered by the operator. So no, council's not paying on the maintenance. We paid for certain, covering the definition of major works if it's needed. Certain depreciation is covered by council and the rate payers, but yeah, the lease figure that you're quoting is only partial, and yeah, maintenance is covered by the operator.
Thank you very much. There's two very separate issues. Yeah, so I just would like to see our new pool be handled the same way as if we give off a lease to... Well, it was handled to the best of the governance at the time, so that's a totally separate issue. This one we decided once we even get to grant funding. We haven't even got that option. But yeah, I just don't hope it doesn't go to any pool advocate groups or anything. Let's keep it... Well, it'll go to a professional, it'll go to tender as people do. Thank you. Anyone else like to ask a question? Thank you, Ms. Crewe.
Marla Crewe, for neighbour place. I recently went to Clarence City Council's Law and Reform Multicultural Working Group, and I think that came after the multicultural framework from the government fostering social cohesion and safer, happier communities. I think we've got that sorted here, the multicultural stuff, but I do think that we need a community working group to act as a conduit between the community and council itself, as opposed to community advocates coming here once a month and asking questions and that sort of thing. Because there are quite a few people who work in an advocacy role in the community, and they're in touch with what's happening at grassroots level. And I think the council did at one stage have a community working group with Shams, am I right? So could we consider that again?
I think we can always consider anything as times change. Anyone want to add any contribution to that, General Manager?
We do have an access and inclusion group that's already up and running, which comprises both elected member membership and community membership. I'm not sure whether the director can add any further detail in relation to membership.
In the name of elected members, we're in our operation, and part of this to effectively look at the community with enough energy. We are absolutely rather proud of those within that space that include my resources and the young community groups that we share with.
I think you probably misconstrued what I've said. Clarence City Council have that, but what I'm suggesting is other issues like problems with youth and more day-to-day stuff at grassroots level that council never hears of.
We're very happy to accept that and take it away and get our officers to have a look at it. That's why we've been trying to trial the open council meetings as well, so we can share the work, like particularly the next one, which is on children's development. We're trying to have this pre-council chat where we share current information, so you know what we as a council have been up to. And we also still have the community yarns, and we do have those pop-ups, so we try to keep the door as open as possible. I'm also happy to meet with anyone from the community at any time, so if you have an idea that you'd like to formulate and work with the council offices, I think what you're talking about is good, is good, but we still have to have the resources available to make it work. It's a great suggestion, thank you.
The government now has a multicultural advisory group, and I've just been nominated to that group.
Well done.
So I think that's why I said, as far as the multiculturalism is concerned, I think that we have that sorted between IMCOH and the government's best. I'm thinking more in terms of what's happening in the community, you know, just everybody in the community, not just the multicultural group.
We'll be very happy for your input, I promise you that. General Manager?
We also do have a safer communities working group, which again comprises representatives from council and from community membership. It's had its, I think, recently held its first meeting, so that group is...
I think Ms. Crewe's talking about a bigger sort of council, not council, a bigger community in Portcreek. So we could probably do that on the regular basis, like the yarns. Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else with a question? Mr. Steinenberg, you haven't got a question? I am disappointed. Thank you. Okay, so do we have any petitions addressing the council meeting? General Manager?
None.
Activities of the mayor? Thank you very much, Alderman Slade, and separated by Alderman Cockshaw.
Mayor, there's just a mistake there, it should read you as the mayor, not as acting mayor.
Yes, I think we've picked that up internally, and we will make sure it doesn't happen again.
I've got no questions.
No questions? Can't you see how busy I've been?
You've been busy.
There's one, two, three, four, five pages. Okay, any other commentary? Yes, thank you.
Yes, looks like you've been busy now. I was curious about the 8th of August meeting with Professor Norell Lickers on youth problems.
Norell Lickers? Yes. Well, Professor Norell Lickers is, oh, she's an amazing, amazing woman. She's 90 years of age, she's been recognised for all sorts of things in the medical field, she's a philosopher, she's done lots of studies around what makes people tick and what makes them healthy and psychological issues coming out of poor health. But the issues of lower socio-economic benefits and standards and things like that, homelessness will affect your health, lack of nutrition, lack of exercise, lack of love, all of these things that will impact on the community. So as you'll see, a lot of my agenda for this month has been with areas of the community trying to find out how we resolve some of these social issues that we've got. And Professor Norell Lickers was one of those experts that I saw advised of, but she's an incredible woman, she just released a new book, which is about that. Anyone else got a question? No. Okay, so I have someone note that we received, or are we just recommendations we receive?
No more, Mayor, busy man, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll put that to the vote, I'll vote in favour, it's carried unanimously. Now, the one you've all been waiting for, item nine, long-term future of the Glenorki Wall Memorial Pool.
I'd like to move an alternative motion.
An alternative motion, okay. Do we have to have that seconded? Just put it first. Yes, just write it first, please.
I'll just read out, so there's no change to point one. Point two would read endorse MI Global Partners' option five, and there would be no change to option three. And my rationale for this is to have a debate around the table in regard to the options.
Okay. Anyone like to second that?
If we do, you know, I think I'd have any clear interest in that, Luke.
Okay, well, there being no second to it's left. Sorry about that.
Oh, sorry.
So we go back to the original motion, which is for option four. Now, did I have a second to this? Oh, we need to move it first. Thank you, Alderman Alderton. And who'd like to go second? Thank you, Alderman Slade. Would you like to speak to it then, please?
Certainly, Mayor, thank you. Look, I think the option speaks loudly for itself, and I congratulate MI Global for the work they've done in this space, the extensive consultation they've had with our community, and the elector poll that was conducted has clearly demonstrated to us as a council that there is significant support for option four within the community. There are significant benefits from option four from the MI Global report, and the inclusion of a gym only value adds to, exploring the inclusion of a gym only value adds to that option reduces the overall loss, and I think we should seriously consider supporting this option.
Thank you. Ever any further commentary? Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor?
Some questions, just regarding the estimated capital cost for the addition of the gym and the health club for option four. Is there any detail around that, what that would be?
Luke? Thank you. We might need to stay up for a while, Luke, I think.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. We don't have a figure on that that's accurate, and that will be part of the work that, assuming this is endorsed, that they will do in the final stage, you know, have more detailed plans done, a full cost estimate redone, including those. You can look at, I guess, some of the cost estimates that were done on the facility that did include the gym. It's just, I'm just nervous to quote those figures because until it's incorporated into this facility and design, it could be a pretty big range between how easily it could fit, whether it needs to go on a second story or a mezzanine and the like. It will clearly add several million dollars, but I guess that could be a big range. As per the discussion we're just having then with Jan, the operational losses are expected to be significantly improved with the inclusion of a health club, and that's certainly been the feedback from other aquatic facilities around the place. The health club is, it creates a holistic environment that you can join up with the aquatic centre, have your pool, have the spa, have the sauna, have your gym, have the aerobics classes and everything else that goes with it, creates an appealing market for people. So it's likely to significantly improve the financial viability of it, even though it will increase it by seven million dollars.
Yeah. Another question, we talked previously, I've been pressed to talk about the like-for-like, and obviously that wasn't fully costed in this report, obviously due to the skewing the funding, the economic benefits that we talked about before. Is there a desktop kind of figure that we can have some understanding around? Because we've obviously got the whole picture here, and the like-for-like is possible or attainable, is it, do you have...
Yeah, I mean, ballpark figure is around the $40 million mark. That's a figure that was suggested very early on in the days when we were looking at replacing, you know, a potential like-for-like facility. The consultants have done some, only some basic work in that regards, it hasn't been sent to the quantity surveyors. The other options have been, so they're able to look at the other options that are similar and pull all the extras out and see how much is left. It's a little bit simplistic though, because you come up with a figure that's likely too low, because just pulling things out isn't usually that easy, you've got to do other things to, you know, to make it a full facility as well. But the analysis that they did that we were talking about before that came out with a negative BCR, a negative net benefits, they even used a figure as low as 34 million, and it still came out negative, so yeah.
That's fine. And just regarding the percentage increases for the rates that was mentioned through there, we've obviously had a good explanation within the report itself. Just wanted to get clarification regarding, is that effectively a one, that's a one rate increase, or are there likely to be other rate increases after that to sustain it?
You know that figure that was... You know that figure that was quoted in the report? I mean, it's, well, when it comes to rates, I mean, it's 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 a, it's talking about a single rate increase. But obviously rates don't come back off the next year, so everything gets added on. So it's forever. It it gets added on and stays there forever.
Yeah.
Uh, no, it's not talking about future ones at that rate. But once it goes up to that rate, it doesn't come back, if you want to be.
Yeah, yeah, no, that makes sense. That's fine.
And Michael worked mentioning to me that um he's an assumption of approximately a third of the capital cost.
Yeah, that's right. That's where that figure came from.
Yes.
About half that figure is assuming we're we're borrowing twenty four million. Yeah, part of that.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of assumptions in that, so. Um, I've got to speak to it as well. Um, just as obviously we've got to be responsible financial managers. Uh, and we've got to really consider all the costs that are involved, depreciation, the ongoing maintenance, the operation and potentially the loan repayments if that's required. Um, and we need to, you know, obviously with the projected revenue, um, if that does not meet expectations, this financial income could become worse than anticipated if this, we went down that road. Um, so I guess appreciate, uh, you know, we've we've done extensive uh consultation with the community and to build a facility that we want. And that's what as we've come back with. Um, and it feels like that, you know, potentially there's going to be increases in costs. Um, you know, we're talking potentially a nine percent increase in a rate. Um, we just need to make sure that we are making the right decision for council uh and for the community moving forward. Um, and that we need to, you know, this is where we're at a point now where we're moving into the next stage. There's a number of decisions that might be made uh moving forward, uh, if it goes ahead. Um, I just want to assure everyone that we are looking at this in a um in a holistic way. Yep, exactly, good, yeah. So, yeah, so it was far from the final decision. Um, and we're going to make the best decision for the community as a whole.
Anyone else? Thank you, or uh councillor?
Or Keane.
Oh, councillor Keane, sorry, Alderman Keane.
Quite, thank you. Um, thank you, Mayor, through you. I see this as a necessary step to get to the final part, which is the general manager getting a business plan developed because at the moment, this is a fairly notional, well thought out, notional plan and we could be well off the mark until we get this proper uh business plan put in place to determine as close as we can the exact cost, will never be exact, but as close as possible. Um, I just see this as a responsible process to move forward and find out where we're really at. And we won't know that until we get the business plan in place. So to me, this is just another step on the road to get to where we hope to get for the community. But um and we'll know once our business plan is developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further contributions? Thank you, councillor Quick.
I have some concerns and wondered whether we've got contingency plans. Assuming the state government kicked the ten in October, and we get the five million dollars and we start work. Then both political parties on the federal level want to win Clark and decide to allocate seventy million dollars. And that money, knowing there have to be a budget process probably in August next year, what contingency plans are put in place, assuming we start work on the five million dollar? Then suddenly, uh, the tooth fairy has given us the the extra money. You know, if you put in pla- now, are there plans in place so that, you know, you can have a, well, almost seamless transition between, you know, the Mickey Mouse one, the five, and and the top of the range seventy?
Uh, look, it would create a a challenging situation for sure if it happened. I think the difficulty is, wow, what 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 do you do? Because I think we're going to face heavy criticism if we sit on our hands and don't pursue the repair and the other five million that's being committed, which is what we're working on now so that we've got the the tender ready to go when the when the five million dollars hits us. Uh, the community's, obviously you've also spoken loud and strong that they want the full repair and reopen as soon as possible. So whilst it would be great if we are offered seventy million dollars at the next federal election, the chances are probably more likely that we're not. So I think we need, we need to keep pursuing the money that we've got committed and the project that we've got committed, which is to repairing and reopening the pool. Um, it may be five, ten years down the track that that funding is available and we'll have a pool open and available for them to use and tell them. Um, yes, if the if the federal government comes out in in twelve months' time and offers us seventy million dollars to rebuild a new facility, it's a bridge we'll have to cross when it comes to it. But I think effectively you would just turn around and start planning and developing that project. A project of that scale is obviously going to take significant time to plan, um, get everything designed to the right extent, tender out and construct. So even under that scenario, you're still likely to probably have a year or two of the of the pool being opened and used, utilized at least. Uh, and look, and the council's been very honest since day one that repairing the pool for five million dollars for the short term is a, is economically a big ask, given that it only has a short life left in it. But the state government has given us that money. So it's great, it's taken the pressure off and and we'll go ahead and do that project. But look, yes, if if the full seventy million dollars is offered to us, then potentially that money has been only a very short term solution.
You can understand the community's concern. You start building one structure and then it might be a possibility in this day and age of, you know, the super duper structure. And then what is the timeframe, assuming we only get the five? When is that going to open? And if the seventy suddenly comes, how much later is the, you know, the opening date? If if uh, you know, the feds decide to give the seventy?
Yeah, that's very, very hard to answer as a hypothetical, except that it would take significantly longer than the repair option. Uh, it's it's obviously a massive investment at seventy million dollars. Um, and it would be a a a big project, but it's, uh, the the, to be honest, it's just, there's no black and white answer to it. It would just create a situation where the repaired pool would only be open for a much shorter period. But at the end of the day, it would be a a positive. Um, it would just mean that we've got the money to develop the new pool. So if that's in one year's time or ten years' time, it's it's a positive either way, really.
So councillor Quick, thank you for that contribution. I think we're in a catch twenty two. But with your experience in government, you would know that there's promises and there's promises. And as you would know, the state government promised in two thousand and eighteen the refurbishment of Coles Grove High, just starting to dig the ground now. They promised the ambulance station, which is about to open very shortly in two thousand and eighteen. And they offered us four baskets, of course, like you can, and a high performance centre, which has been taken away from us. So a a promise is not necessarily a promise. And you can have, you all right, Alderman? Uh, no, not Alderman, sorry. Helen Burnett MP, welcome to the council. Major entrance, well known. So the point is, councillor Quick, is that promises can be core promises, broken promises, all sorts of promises.
Extended promises.
Extended promises, yes, and um promises that might be matched. And then a new um prime minister comes in and says no, which has happened with other issues. I think also, at the moment, just to give you a guide, the current maximum grant is fifty million. And we're looking at somewhere between needing seventy and thirty million. So even if we were successful, uh, we have to have a a shovel ready business plan to go. So whichever one we go with or then we'll be refining it and then we need it to put up for the funding. So we're a long way from the end of the journey. Thank you, councillor Cockshut.
Thanks, Mayor. Look, I I support the process and obviously it's been an extensive time period of consultation and having MI Global was on board. Um, the reason I put uh option number five was what I think would be much more of a hub um process. But I do appreciate option four as a recommended option by the consultancy. I think a few Alderman councils have raised the point around the table is that we've got to be, like the deputy mayor said, responsible economic managers here. And um we've got to do our due diligence and move to the next stage of creating a business plan and um see what happens from a grant space. It's all well and good to have a plan, but when you're looking at a project of around seventy million dollars, and we know what inflation's like and the cost of services, um, and raw materials, every year this keeps going on, the higher and higher it's going to get. So um we are relying heavily on state and federal government support and it's out of our hands. Um, because unfortunately, as it stands at the council, we can't afford to invest that particular capital in that project. Um, it will just be us and selling it to the relevant stakeholders to come aboard the journey, engage the community, um, and move forward in that manner. So um I'm happy to support the motion and move forward to the next stage. And I think it'll be a very busy um six or so months advocating and getting the business plan in place when the time comes to haggle and um um hassle those federal politicians. But um all we can do is put our best foot forward.
Thank you. Any further contributions? Thank you, councillor Kendall.
Thank you, Mayor. So I support option four. I think it's the greatest scoring option, it's the people's choice and it's got the best social outcome. I, to me, the fifty meters is really important and the outdoor is really important. And we heard that loud and clear from the community. Huge amount of community interest and passion has been spurred as a part of this process, which has been really great to see the community come together and just tell us loud and clear how important a pool is to them. And it's really cemented for me that it's an essential service, like, it's like a hospital to me. But it's a preventative, you know, essential service. So I'm really happy that we're at this stage after the long process of um the consultants going out and weighing up all the options. To me, it's eye wateringly expensive, but I don't know how much pools cost, I'm not an expert. Um, the pools that I've been looking at and dreaming about are fantastic. Six star green, incredible pools that are being built in Melbourne. There there was two um in the last two years, one in twenty twenty two um and one in twenty twenty three that came in around sixty million mark. So that's sort of what I was hoping for in my head. Um, but uh, yeah, I mean, we've been presented with the expert advice here and I support number four. In terms of the bells and whistles thing that was brought up in question time and also referenced by the mayor, I get the argument of just wanting something simple, but now totally understand that you need those bells and whistles to bring in the higher revenue and to offset the cost overall and to be an appealing option for funders. So the other thing is, I understand the distance that we've had to have as elected members from this whole consultation process with the with MI Global, even though that's been hard because we've been had community appealing to us personally. Um, so I understand that separation, but what I feel like I missed out on is um making sure that community involvement remains in this proj- project and maybe that's in the future. But I think these groups that have spun up and told us how important the pool is to them should keep being engaged in the pool. Its operation, what what happens there, have a say. And also the monuments that got talked about in the development of having some testament to the original uh effort, which was a community effort to build the pool with Ben Bois too. So which is incredible and should be acknowledged. Um, so that, that's one thing, sustainability credentials. I would love to see that incorporated and I just would be so proud if we had an incredibly um carbon positive, completely electric, six green star facility that we could give the community, something really cutting edge. Um, and a water slide, I really would love to see that as a team drawcard. We've got massive social issues and that's such a great way for hormonal teens to test their um, to test their limits and get their energy out in a positive way. So a little bit sad that it didn't have a water slide, I've got to say. But presented with the three options, I support number four. So very long story short, um, my question is, can these three things of community involvement, sustainability and possible water slide be incorporated at some point?
Option four does.
Has a water slide, does it come outside of the building?
It's only, it's only very um high level concept in terms of the the functional, the the design so far, but it does include outdoor splash pad slash slide. So beside the fifty meter pool, you can see the little pond shaped bit. That's supposed to be the the playing pool and the slide.
Okay, doesn't come out of the building though, does it? To go back in, that's that was a drain.
No, it hasn't been designed to that level, but. Yeah, although, so there has been some feedback that we should possibly consider gas boosters just for those shoulder seasons. Um, whilst we're definitely looking at the the heat pump, heating system and solar panels to help with that, it can struggle on the shoulder seasons. Um, and the advice is that the heat pump can then run at at its maximum power for very little heat. So just in those shoulder months, then there might be a gas booster because there is mains gas going through there. Um, I know it's definitely better to have the the electric, but you can actually go backwards by forcing the heat pump in that shoulder season because you've got to get the water up to a pretty high temperature.
Right. Um, thank you for that response and only follow up question, and that's a false thing. Um, will the demolition and decommissioning costs be incorporated and how will they be accounted for?
They are in the cost, they have been accounted for.
Thank you, Luke, that's wonderful as usual. Anyone else? Thank you, Alderman Slade.
Thank you, Mayor. I support the recommendations. You all know it's a penalty process, but uh um, I'm certainly not an expert on pools. And I think at times, um, we have consulting reports and some people believe that, you know, you shouldn't take notice of those reports. Well, you have to on some circumstances. And I certainly support option four and and the rationale and the uh the expertise which MI Global have put into their writings on this. As a plus that the community support that particular one too, so that's a tick to me. I recognise certainly the support that the community's had in all this through this. And I look, I know that the council's very open on this and that that will continue. I think the important thing also about is that at least we've got to um start to put things on the table. We've got the option there, Mayor, and I'm looking forward to the next stage in which the general manager and his team can go ahead and start the starting part of a business plan. So uh I haven't got much more to say, um, except I support the option, or the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with a contribution? No. So I'll just finish up by reminding people that the five million dollars for repairing and making safe the current pool funded by the state government, or will be hopefully, and the two hundred thousand dollars which went to tender to get a consultant out of the best consultants in this area was also provided by the state government. So the council hasn't um spent money recklessly. We've tended everything and um we have to take, it's our obligation. It's part of our um duties as being elected officials that we have to do everything with due fiduciary um carefulness. And that's what we've had to do. And as none of us are experts and we don't actually even have that expertise on council, we've gone out to seek the very best advice we possibly could. That has involved massive community consultation. We would still, to councillor Kendall's point, love to have the community with us, particularly once a final decision is made to help us advocate. So we brought letters of of support and any assistance you can give us at that time, um, once we get there. Um, I want everyone just to stop and take a deep breath. There's lots of people on Facebook and all sorts of other social media who know better than any of us in this room or the experts of how to build a pool for twenty thou- twenty million. And we're being ripped off and goodness knows what else. I say poof to you because we have done so much work. We've attended the workshops, we've listened to the briefings, we've done the reading. Some of the councillors have done their own research. And we can only rely on the people who actually know what they're talking about. I want to remind everyone here that Lennox Hall is a city, a city we should be proud of. So we don't want people who want a second class pool that they won't use. The next generations to come won't use what they refer to as the degraded, old and cold pool. So we have to build a pool for the future, for the next few generations to keep. We want the city to grow, we want young people, we want them to have their children, have healthy activities. So we are not going to waste our time on a make do paddling pool somewhere. It's really critical that we have a learn to swim facility, that we get the school kids back into championships and things like that where we can. So we're aiming for that. If we have to cut our cloth, so be it. But we're not going to settle for this when we could aim for that. Because as you never know, councillor Quick could be right and there is a tooth fairy just around the corner. So I am fully supportive of um progressing this to the next stage, which is going on to look at the business case and to back up what we've been told to date. And as I said, it's still subject to change should something come out of the woodwork that we've not expected. So with that, I'm going to, oops.
Just a question, Mayor. Should we be approaching as many politicians as possible now because the election may well be in December?
We don't have a business case, we don't even have a final decision.
Well, we can go over the wish list and get something, promise something when we get a business case potentially. There'll be a lot of promises, the election's likely to be in December, so.
Yes, and well, we'll, once we make a decision, we might consider that. But I think you're just a little bit ahead of the.
No.
Uh, um, now the other thing I'd just like to make very clear is that this council does not expect to make a profit out of a pool. So there are other people saying, oh, why should you make a profit? We don't make profits on our sports grounds, we don't make profits on our art, um, centre. There's lots of things, public toilets don't make profits. We don't expect to make a profit, but we do, uh, promise to minimise the losses to the public. So for every three hundred odd thousand that we have in expenses that can't be covered by paying to go to a gym or whatever, that becomes a one percent increase in rates. So that's our mission is to keep the costs as low as possible. Okay, I'm going to put this to the vote. All those in favour, raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you. Now, that's ten. Ten, the cultural celebrations grants, application and guidelines. Who'd like to move this? Ooh, two quick hands. So we'll have Alderman Slade and Alderman King. Do you want to open it please, Alderman Slade?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I think it's fair to say that the, when the, uh, quite a mouthful this one, the working groups of communications and, and the, the working group for cultural celebration grants was created. Um, look, there's a lot of things that perhaps we didn't know or we didn't quite perhaps clarify some things in the documentation. Uh, we might have set the bar a bit high, we might have set it a little bit low. So I'm really pleased that after having a couple of meetings with colleagues around the table as well, that we've met and we've now come up with a, a better format in relation to, um, for people who've got interest in this area to apply. It's much clearer. I think it's a real, that's a good point. I think it's really good now that instead of having a meeting where we'd assess those app- applications, you know, like the next meeting sort, now we're going to have them in batches, which is going to be three times a year. So it's going to be November, January and April. So I think that shows that we've, we've matured a bit and, and can look at it more in a, in a group pro- process. Um, another thing is that we're updated, so with the first round out by the thirty-first of October. It's like everything like this to do with the community is to make them aware early. Um, they're often, um, perhaps, uh, haven't got a big group of people that are in the admin department of their own respective group. And this, uh, gives them plenty of time to do that. Uh, we added things like, uh, updated the child safety clause, all these good things we should be doing. Uh, and, uh, we're just going to, um, do a little bit more through our comms section that works very well in relation to making it more interesting, bit more, uh, clarifying, more clarification should I say, and also frequently asked questions. So that's, I, I'm very happy with the way that is. I think this year, uh, this twelve-month period, Mayor, will be a, a, probably a, a better outcome. Uh, because the fact is, uh, people inquiring for the grants will have a clearer, um, run of what's needed and what's required. And secondly, the process will be, uh, a little bit easier and also very accountable to participate in. And we're hoping that whatever comes out, that those events, um, serve our communities very well in, in a history of had this, uh, council of celebrating cultural events.
That's a good question, um.
And pleased you coming on as well.
Yes, thank you. Um, the application due date has been updated to the thirty-first of October for the first round. Is that going to be too late for the Dewali Festival?
Well, what I was going to say, there's always, that what is my scenario there is, and I had a meeting, was that, uh, that particular group, and we're aware that just simply, um, makes contact with you, Mayor, as, as the mayor. And then there's a special arrangement or thing can be done in relation to outside the general scenario here.
But with the committee?
With the committee, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, uh, bear in mind, we're fully aware of the intent and enthusiasm for that event. It's just very, very hard that we had, we had a meeting that we didn't have that on the table. So it just needed a bit of flexibility there, Mayor.
Yeah, because it's a very important culture.
Extremely, uh, that's second or third in the, uh, calendar, yeah.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Sorry, yes, councillor Kendall.
I, of course, would like to, um, ask for a resolution. I think these grants are really important, um, especially in a time where we can see rising racism. I think it's important for the multicultural community to feel, um, heard and to see their council investing in their, you know, in appreciating them and, and them having an important place in our community. So I'd like to thank Alderman Russell Yaxley for all of the initial motion to, um, hold on to these funds from, uh, leftover from the, or that were previously allocated to the Moonetaste of the World Festival. Um, and sort of reembarking them with the multicultural community. Um, and I think, uh, Alderman Slade has done a great job of summing up some of the issues that we came across. I was, I really appreciated being a part of that group. And the, the other changes that we've made were, um, sometimes it was unclear how much money was left in the pot, so people would make an application and they didn't. Yeah, they were asking for more than what was left over. So that's another change we've made. And also in the name, I think there was a bit of a perception, because they're called cultural cele- celebration grants, that that was sort of for parties and stuff. So, um, yeah, maybe, uh, just plant a seed of keeping in mind that maybe a name change in the next round, if we're still getting people applying. Um, that the purpose and the spirit of the grant is to not only celebrate cultures but connect cultures with other cultures and also to the wider community. Um, yeah, to sort of bridge that gap between cultures and welcome the Anglo community into multicultural, um, events as well. So, uh, yeah, I think us taking on board a bit of the marketing will really help with that. Spread the word too, so everyone in our committee can take advantage of these grants and go to these fantastic events. So I'd like to recommend the resolution.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question. So you mentioned Dewali a moment ago and they're, they're beating outside the window for, um, applying for a grant. So if we were going to apply some sort of exemption or condition to, to that event, I assume that would apply to anybody else in the community that finds themselves in the same situation as Dewali. They could contact you directly or?
Well, they can contact me. I can only do what's within the power of the policy. But yes, I'm, I'm always open anyway. So anyone who needs help can get in touch with me and we can say whether the community can meet earlier. That's always an option. Okay, um, so any further discussion? Thank you.
Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I really like, uh, that's outlined by Alderman Slade and those three, three rounds. I think that's really smart, um, it expands the ability over the whole twelve months. I think it's a really, really, uh, smart move. Um, and I really hope that all the fun is exhausted. We can, um, um, you know, have more considerable, you know, maybe perhaps more in the future. So that's a great, great, uh, it's a great, great, uh, opportunity for, um, to connect and be inclusive for our cultures.
Okay, final opportunity, no? Okay, I'm going to put that motion. All those in favour, raise your hand. Carried unanimously. We move on to item eleven, which is proceeds of property disposal summary report. Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Dunstey. Please proceed, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it clearly outlines, um, the ins and outs of, of past decisions and, and the, the allocation of the funding. Uh, and there really doesn't leave anything to the imagination or conspiracy theories. It's pretty, it's black and white. Um, and we are making sure that we are as transparent as we possibly can be and, and looking after the funds that come from that, uh, in a, in a good way. So I'll open it up to the floor.
Continue. Any discussion? No, put the motion, all those in favour, raise your hand. Carried unanimously. Item twelve, the federal grant funding opportunities. Okay, who'd like to put this motion? Come on, quickly. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, do I have a second? Thank you, Alderman Alderton.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this really outlines, um, the endorsement, um, for lodging grant funding submissions for the thriving suburbs program, uh, up to five point three million. And we're looking at having that co- and their council for the, um, facilities at Tolosa Park. Um, Tolosa Park is, has been a point, um, in our, for our state and, and a beacon. And I'm really looking forward to seeing that continue to develop up there and see it become what it used to be like. So I'm really excited about that. And the third part, um, is obviously instructing the general manager to logic around application around the Glenorkie Pool and its redevelopment. So I'll, uh, full discuss.
Thank you. Discussion, please. Got your time. Thank you very much, councillor Quick.
Once, once we've decided what we're going to put our hand up for, I think we need to generate as much interest from the public so that, you know, when they're talking to their federal politicians, uh, and even the state ones, that, you know, we, we need a fair share. Sadly in Tasmania, everyone knows that Bass Braden and Northern Lions gets most of the pie. And unless Franklin and Clark are marginal, hardly any money is spent down here. Occasionally there's a bit of a handout, like, uh, out at, uh, the soccer grounds at, uh, North Cheltenham. So as soon as we decide, now let's, let's put it in the Glenorkie Gazette and say, this is what we put our hand up for. And when you see the senators and members, uh, give them a hard time. You know, we, we deserve as much as anybody else. And that's how the system works.
Thank you. That's along the lines of, um, Alderman King's suggestion. So we will be in the ears of everyone. Alder- Alderman Alderton.
Uh, just an observation, Mayor. Everybody can see clearly on the screen that we have dot point one two, but the gallery is probably not aware that we have a dot three, which is instructing the general manager to logic grant. Oh, there we go. Thank you. So I'll just point that in. Thank you.
Yes. Any further discussion? Oh, sorry. Thank you, Alderman Dunstey.
Yeah, I just think that, um, having this on the table now, that we're getting our, we're in blocks in place, ready to strike when we need to and instructing the general manager, giving him the ability to do that. So I think the timing of this is good that we're doing it now and not waiting for it. So I appreciate it coming to the council table at this point.
Thank you. Councillor Kendall?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I absolutely support the thriving communities, um, grant to be put in. I think it's really important to continue to develop the Tolosa, um, park. I think it can be a really incredible destination park and a jewel in the crown of our city. Um, in terms of the U triple P grant, I don't support. Yeah, I just don't understand us putting in a fifty million dollar grant for what we now know is a eighty million dollar project potentially. And like, maybe I'm just outing myself as super naive here, but.
If that's the maximum we can apply for.
Yeah, yep, but.
Got a feeling.
Yeah, so in the case that we did receive that funding, what would we do? Would we get a loan for the extra thirty million or?
That's worse, yeah. This is worst case scenario and that's why the nine percent was mentioned. We have to take any repayments.
So my question is, I mean, out in the outside world, when you apply for a grant and you ask for more than what is actually in the grant specifications, which is how I read the recommendations, but maybe that's not what we're going to put in the actual grant application. I've just been chucking it out as a grant giver. So is the plan to put in a four fifty, that fifty million with the precursor or the info in there that it's actually a seventy to eighty million dollar project? Or are we going to ask for eight, seventy to eighty million and take gifts fifty?
Let's ask Luke.
Um, the idea is to, uh, try and, uh, generate some interest, I think as councillor Quick mentioned, to draw attention to the pool. The idea would be to ask for the eighty million with an explanation about, um, what's required, what's required. Uh, the thing with this grant is there's no deadline, no end date. And if it's definitely not accepted, uh, we do get an opportunity to lodge another grant or rethink our, uh, our grant. So it's probably one of the only opportunities we get where we get a large sum of money uh, without having to put in a co-contribution. Uh, we have an election coming up soon, so the thinking was also to try and, um, use the pork barrelling process to get the additional thirteen million if we're successful with the fifty.
And can I clarify that it's fifty million for all of Australia with this grant?
It's fifty million a year for the next three years, but it's, you can apply for fifty million for the phase two part. In the first coming two phases, one is up to five million, uh, to write your business cases, do your feasibility studies, all the partnerships. We don't need the first stage because we'll have a, um, a, a pretty good, um, well-developed business case with the MI Global, um, uh, study that's been done, you know, along with the consultation. So we could use that. We would have to form a partnership. Um, but we, we're thinking there's a number of groups that would be willing to form partnerships with us. And, um, yeah, we'd, we'd apply for the full amount. Like I said, if, if not successful for that one, because there's no end date, we're actually able to lodge for something else.
Okay, and one last question. Is it a huge amount of office or time? I'm just concerned about the likelihood of us getting the shortfall and the investment in applying for the grant.
Mayor, it, there is a bit of office or time involved, but we have a lot of information already ready about the pool as well. Uh, we've actually, um, four of what we've already got. Uh, part of the stones, the MI Global info and, uh, used that for the grant application.
Have to start somewhere, councillor.
Well, I'm not feeling a huge appetite for splitting these three applications. So, yeah, go ahead and tick off to recommendations before the resolution.
Well, there's, this is actually two different projects though, which are very important to the community, one being Tolosa Park. Can I just ask a question, uh, Director? Is Tolosa, uh, jet, correct, General Manager, um, no, Deputy General Manager. Okay, how many huts are we likely to get new hut? Did we get answered it?
Six with barbecues.
Six with barbecues, hmm. Okay, because I do know they facilitate wonderful family memories. So we might have to find some more money from the benefactors. Yeah, six extra ones.
Oh, excellent. Good.
Yeah.
Good.
How much is that in total?
Eighty? Yeah, that's actually close to twenty, maybe a quarter, so that'd be about twenty.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Very much looking forward to that project. I think it would be great. Are there any other, uh, questions anyone wants? No, I'm going to put this motion to the vote. All those in favour, unanimous. That's fantastic. Now we move to item thirteen, which is the media and communications framework. And thank you very much, Alderman Cockshack. And thank you very much, Deputy. And do you want to start, please?
Yeah, surely. Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, I just want to congratulate the media and communications team. Obviously we've had a lot of work done on this and had a workshop on what this looks like. So commend the staff for the effort they've gone on. I know we, um, had a bit of feedback along the journey. So really happy with the end result and, uh, no questions from my end. Just to say thanks once again.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Uh, yeah, just, um, since being on the council, I've certainly been persistent, um, in my desire. I did see our communications improve. Um, and I think we've been pretty firm and hard on that because it's such a crucial part, um, in us doing what we say we're going to do and, and to become in contact with. So, um, I'm really pleased that, uh, this framework and plans, um, have come together now and that it really helps us to communicate clearly in a way to understand and comprehend. So I certainly agree with the recommendations.
Thank you. Any further comments, Alderman Alderton?
More a question, Mayor, I just a question to the responsible officer. How far away are we from having the toolkit up and running in regards to, obviously if we're going to endorse this policy, it's going to be, become active, how far away are we from having the, the toolkit up and running to support the policy?
We'll have the manager, Krista Lanes.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Um, we'll start populating, so the group will start populating in a week. And you'll have access to the viral team sites. We will send you out, um, or I will send you out instructions on how to access that. And then we'll build the internal, um, the, the internet for our, our internal staff.
Okay, thank you.
We're lucky to have such an energized, um, communications team.
We are.
Thank you. Alderman Slade?
Yeah, look, uh, Mayor, like many of us around the table, I'm really pleased that, uh, we've got a really effective communication section in the council now and, uh, um, that kind of go. And, uh, um, that kind of go forward from that. I went through the attachments. Uh, I've got a question. Is that, um, I have asked before, is that if an organisation says, look, I'd like to put something on the, uh, Glick City Council, um, website or, or no, I think right, what's the criteria for them to be able to do that? I, I couldn't see that anywhere in the attachment is, you know, like the criteria, Mayor. And, um, a lot of people ask me that, ask me that as I'm walking around. Oh, now would you be able to do this? And I say, look, someone please contact the communications section, but I couldn't see it anywhere.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. That would be part of the toolkit.
Toolkit?
Yes.
Thank you.
So social media.
Thank you.
We've got requirements.
Yep.
Um, but in short, if it's for profit, we would normally say no, but if it's for not for profit, absolutely.
Thank you. That's good coming. Good.
Thank you. Any further questions? No, just, um, compliments from me too, because I get to see, you know, on a weekly basis, it's a very driven and exciting and excitable team. And we're very lucky to have them. Thank you. So, um, with that, I'm going to put this motion. All those in favour, say aye. You have all raised your hand. Yes. Carried unanimously. Now we're moving on to item 14, intention to make animal management bylaw. Thank you, councillor Quick. Oh, sorry, you're just mutching it. I'm very fast. I'm going to wake up. So you're the mover. And secondly, please. Thank you. I'll take Alderman Alderton. Would you like to speak, councillor Quick?
Certainly would. Uh, I welcome the update of the bylaw and the community consultation that's taken place. And as I've expressed previously,
Cap.
My deep concern that we haven't bitten the bullet and looked at cat management. Uh, as I've stated before, Clarence are looking at it. And I've suggested that we have a Greater Hobart strategy. Uh, Canberra with a population twice the Greater Hobart have put new management, cat management plans in place, and they are very effective. And they have resulted in less deaths of the fauna that, uh, inhabits, you know, the Greater Hobart area. So, uh, while passing this tonight, I'd like to think that, uh, we start developing a strategy for a rather contentious issue. Because we'll have to register cats, we'll have to charge fees, uh, and be very prescriptive. So I'm sort of hinting that you accept this tonight with gratitude. But the people in the back rooms need to, uh, start thinking about what we do next. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Alderton.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I think this is a step in the right direction because one, our current animal management bylaws expire. Two, this is going to give our council officers a lot more clarity, uh, a lot more power and a lot more understanding of how they can effectively regulate any ongoing animal management issues. And the third important thing is that it still has to go to, the draft still has to go to the, uh, go as a regulatory impact statement anyway. And be approved by the appropriate body. It has to go out to the community in the, in, in the newspaper for, for comment. So I fully support this and think it's a step in the right direction in regards to councils' animal, animal management.
Thank you. Any further commentary? Thank you, councillor Kendall.
Thank you, Mayor. I really enjoyed the workshops that we did on this and I wanted to, um, it just, yeah, it still blows my mind. There, there are so many different types of areas within the Glenorki LGA. Um, yeah, Collins Vale, there's livestock, there's all sorts, and also the shift, um, to people doing their own sort of small scale and will have them bring in the cities. So we started improving during COVID of people getting chooks in their backyard and people are getting beehives. And that's great. And that's really was acknowledged in that workshop and in this info, um, which I think we should really support. So, yeah, I'm really happy to see we're moving towards the bylaw. I know we're a long way off still. But my thoughts are to when we're actually implementing this and in practice, what it's going to look like rolling it out in council. And so my question is, how much information and support would we be giving to community members in how they can be good, responsible animal managers? I don't know who I'm asking.
Manager?
Yes. So we have Robbie coming up to talk to us. All things animal.
Hello, thank you through you, Mayor. Um, yeah, plenty. We currently do quite a bit as it is. Um, it's, it's interesting because quite a few years ago, we used to have an education officer that did quite a lot of, of that work. Um, and it's something that we've been looking into recently as well. So perhaps putting that forward as a, um, as an extension to, uh, one of the roles that we have. But, yeah, most of our, um, education is through, some through our communications team, um, out on the social media, it's on our website. Um, but also out in the field when our officers, um, do visit these issues out in the municipality. Um, that is mostly, um, education, um, there and then. Um, enforcement of the bylaw with infringements, um, is a kind of a last resort. Um, so we, we kind of see this as more of an educational piece anyway.
Thank you. Any further questions, Robbie? What about you?
Um, Mayor, as I say, look, um, I think it's important that we do these so that they re-clear. The, the enforcement side is there as well for people don't do it right. And more importantly, I think, uh, councillor Kendall's referred that, that the community understands it. I remember going through these, we actually had a committee on these about 25, 30 years ago. Crikey, um, I just never seen a lot of them live, you know, what you could do, what you couldn't do. And, um, I've never heard of some of these animals actually. Um, and it was quite amazing. But look, we've got it all together now and I think it's good. And we might have some other challenges coming up on the cat side. Send my two, my two missy and birdie got different views on that. But, um, look, it's good, it's a good forward step and it must make the good hard workers in respect to the people to go out and, uh, uh, you know, control this much easier. So I, I, I support the recommendation, Mayor.
Thank you. And my two chooks, Fran and Freda, are very happy that they got rined. They give me lovely eggs every morning. So with that, I'm going to put this motion to the vote. All those in favour, raise your hands. Second, not the unanimous one. Thank you. And they tend to look a bit automatic, but they're unanimous because we have worked shop them thoroughly beforehand before coming to this meeting. Um, item 15, review of council's code for tenders and contracts. So yes, thank you, Alderman Slade. Thank you, Alderman Dunstey.
Mayor, I couldn't see in here, that was of, uh, a great concern in relation to the revised code, code for tender and contracts. And, um, and, and seven point two, purpose revised once on council's website, very open again. And I support the recommendation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Uh, thank you.
May I just a couple of questions if I could? Um, just regarding the, the line where it talks about indigenous businesses, um, in terms of, uh, where it says, two seconds, just a moment. Um, so where they've got a provision to preference or directly engage indigenous businesses. Um, could you, could that explain the rationale behind that in terms of that part of this code for the tenders and the contracts? And, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we may be favouring indigenous businesses over other businesses? Or is there a particular reason behind all that?
Thank you.
But again, I might start and I might hand to the director, but, um, so, um, obviously we already have existing provisions in our code that, that effectively provide a, a preference for, uh, local content. If you like, local Tasmanian businesses. It is, it, um, the, in terms of the weightings that are given to various things, you know, cost and quality are much higher in the weightings than local content. But it is there as a, as a marginal, um, uh, component to try to encourage local business input. Uh, similarly, as part of the reconciliation action plan process, one of the commitments the council made through that process was to encourage, um, indigenous business. Um, and I think it, it falls as a, from looking at the report, and I don't know the detail of this, but it falls within, within the, um, local content rules. But the director may be able to add a little bit more to that.
I think that's a good way of thinking. And I'm taking that this approval, that we would include recognition of indigenous businesses, um, in Tasmania. And we've included it as a component, alongside quality, price, uh, capability.
It's a very small piece, I reckon, right up here.
But it's still a recognition and, and we gave that our time.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's symbolic.
It's good.
But we still don't, um, resolve from the, the key issues around value for money, uh, for our community.
Thank you. And Alderman Stringer, would you have your hand up?
Uh, I can't second you.
Oh, I'll pick it up. All right. I'll pick it up. I'll screen the next, the next one. Okay, so.
I've got nothing further to say.
Nothing further to say. You're not a summer. Okay, so put that motion, all those in favour, raise your hand.
Sorry.
Sorry. Sorry, councillor Kendall.
Um, yeah, so I was just talking about the bylaw and I've loved that workshop. This is something I would have loved to see come to a workshop because I really see the power in the levers that we can put into our tendering process to get the kind of social, um, outcomes that we want, or even kick some balls in the annual plan or our long-term plan. So, um, yeah, I was really happy to see that First Nations, um, reference in there, um, as a part of the weighting. And, yeah, I'd love to see stuff around environmental practices, potentially social housing. Then a note there on modern slavery, that might have been a good opportunity, um, to ban things like alcohol and gambling ads and sporting providers potentially. So I would have loved to really flesh this out. Um, when's that coming up for you again? I'm a missed.
Four years.
Four years. Oh, mate, I'm not going to be here.
It's operational.
Yeah, it's more operational than, um, anything else. But having said that, there's nothing to stop you from putting up, um, a motion for investigation of anything you particularly want at any time. Or asking the general manager to come back with, you know, some answers of how things could be improved.
Yep. All right.
Yep. So for that, now can I put it to the vote? Yes. All right. All those in favour, raise your hands. Yes. Carried unanimously. Now we're moving on to item 16, which is procurement and contracts exemption report. And I'm going to say, Alderman Stringer would like to move this one.
I'm going to move the recommendation.
Thank you. And thank you, Alderman Dunstey, for seconding. Do you have any commentary to open debate? No?
Record.
Yep, any straightforward. Thank you, right. Anyone else like to comment on this one? No? In that case, we'll go straight to the vote. Um, all those in favour, raise your hand. Thank you. This one.
I was just going to say, well done. The general manager for moving on things in emergency situation.
It is good because it is about, for those who haven't read the agenda, drug testing consultancy services. And there's only one provider in the state. So it was important that we get that approved. Thank you. So that's carried unanimously. Um, item 17 is the audit panel chair's annual report. As a member of the audit committee, would you like to move? Thank you, deputy. Would like to speak to it. Thank you, the other member. Now councillor Quick.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Um, yeah, so just, uh, obviously the chairs and the report, um, I was trying, I was taking a little snippet out of the role of panelists. The role of the audit panel is to support the elected council about independent assurances and advice in relation to council's financial reporting controls. Risk management framework and practices, internal controls, legislative, legislative compliance, long-term planning, forward control and corruption prevention. Is role complemented by both internal and external offices. Um, and I've obviously been on the panel, uh, for once and proxy for a couple. Um, the panel, uh, that we have on there, the people on there are so experienced. Um, and, uh, they are invested into what we're doing and, and are very good at what they do. So I would encourage anyone to read the report and just have a look at the extent of what they do to make sure that we're doing business correctly. It's great.
Thank you. Come on to make any contributions.
First of all, I'd like to thank members of, uh, our council who prepare meticulously for every audit panel meeting. Uh, if you could see the detail, you'd be absolutely amazed and stupefied. So I'd like to put on public record Tracy and her team, the work you people do. I really, really appreciate it. People who say we're not transparent, have a look at the audit panel report. They go through with a forensic interest into everything, even to how much the general manager spends on his credit card.
Which is always nothing.
It is really, really, you know, first class. And I have nothing but respect for everybody who, who works through that process. Uh, and I'd encourage those who are listening, those who are here, that, you know, if you want to have a look at how, and the council works effectively, have a look at the audit panel report for the previous year.
Thank you. And Alderman Dunstey, would you like to add anything? Cause you're a proxy.
I have attended me as a proxy. I couldn't, I couldn't only endorse what's already been said. I don't have anything to add. But it's, it's, it's nothing like what we do here. It's almost a completely different environment, but a very, very, um, positive one. But as we say, it's so intensive.
Thank you. Any other commentary? No? Okay. Then I'm going to put that motion, all those in favour, raise your hands. Carried unanimously. Item 18, financial performance report, 31st of July. This is one Alderman Cockshut usually jumps all over. Would you like to move it? Oh, sorry. Alderman Dunstey first. You get second.
Give it up for change.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Um, obviously the highs and lows, the bumps very early in our financial year are explained there. The report explains in order. I don't think there's anything I have to question. So I'll throw it open to the meeting for any further questions.
Okay, any further? Nothing? Okay.
Further, nothing.
Yeah, sorry. Any, anything further? Question mark? Stop. No, 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 stop. Nothing. Okay, noted. Uh, all those in favour of this one, raise your hand. Thank you. That's carried unanimously. Uh, 19, notices of motions, questions on notice or without notice. Thank you, Alderman Alderton.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on those actually.
Yeah.
So I've observed on social media, the Mercury newspaper Facebook page have been reporting that Glenorki City Council will be reopening the repaired Glenorki City Pool this summer. I, um, I'm asking or calling on council that maybe we contact the Mercury. Because this is causing a lot of angst in the community, a lot of misinformation, a lot of disbelief that they're going to have a pool to swim in this summer. So are council prepared or would council consider approaching the, the Mercury and ask the Mercury to correct that, that story on their Facebook page?
Yes, we can do that. That's not an issue. And, um, we'll also look at other ways of conveying the same message.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We don't want misinformation out there.
Maybe we can show where we're up to.
Yes. Are we doing that regularly?
Yeah, it's obviously bad.
No, well, um, okay. Any other notices of motions, questions without notice? Is that okay? Thank you very much. Alderman King is moving us into clothes, followed by Alderman Stuart Slade. And with that, is there any debate? No. In that case, show of hands. That's it. So thank you very much to members of the public for joining us tonight and for anyone online. It's been a pleasure to go through the council agenda with you. And we look forward to seeing you at, um, as soon as we can and at.